Good evening, Miss Hallowich, y'all, and that's our prayer.
Yeah. From the early rise of the sun to the setting thereon, we realize, Lord, who you are. It was you who woke us up this morning by your grace and your mercy. We ask that this evening, Lord, that you go to war-torn lands everywhere. We ask to go to the homeless. We ask that you go to those who were devastated by floods. We ask that you speak a word because you know that you are too wise to make a mistake. Heavenly Father, this evening for those who are going through sad hours of relief now, we ask that you cool their spirits and calm them, Lord, and let them realize, Lord, that you are God and you are God all along. Heavenly Father, this evening, I ask that you come into the meeting and help keep our mission ever in front of us to teach and educate all the students here at Kirshaw County. Lord, temper what we say is love. Temper everything, Lord, when you love and trust each other. And that we too, Lord, will do what is right for all the citizens here of Kirshaw County. And we will give you all the honor and glory that is through you. And it's in your name we pray. And it's in your name we count it all down. Amen.
Public Kirshaw County School Board of Plus B is meeting to order for November the 20th, 2023. Want to thank each and everyone for gathering here this evening. G Whitfield Chronicle Independent and Joe Johnson with W P U D Radio. Is there a motion to adopt the proposed agenda? Top of the motion by Mr. McDonald, second by Bob. All those in favor, let me know by a stand aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, back to now. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda proven the meeting minutes of October the 17th and the meeting minutes of October the 31st for financing facility as well as two facility waivers? Proper motion by Coach Lightman, second by Mr. Iry. All those in favor, let me know by a stand aye.
Aye.
And one. Moves us down to our public forum. No one has signed up this evening. Want to say thanks to the men aboard and them whom have signed up to go to the legislative advocacy conference this first week in December. Whole lot of good information and training that takes place there. That moves us down to our next item, who contend that been 15 report instructional focus.
Yes, as Mr. Matthews comes up, if I could just make a couple of comments before he begins his presentation. We obviously have a very multi-pronged approach on what we're doing to address the academic concerns of the district. A lot of these, you will note as he goes through and talks about them, will be ones that are prescribed for us like the A T S I schools where we're addressing specific subgroups. We basically do not get a choice in what we do there. Also, sometimes people ask questions, well, why do you have certain positions? And I'm going to use the literacy coaches as a position that's one that gets a lot of questions. You know, well, we've had literacy coaches now for about 14 years. Is it really something we need to keep doing? Well, it's not a do we do have literacy coaches? If they specifically send us the money and say we have to have literacy coaches in the elementary. And so we've done that. Well, what's happened over time, and just want to emphasize, you know, on the E L A side, we saw some real significant gains this past year. But on the math side, as you know, we were struggling. Well, the state gives great, great support toward literacy, but really there is no mechanism in place from the state for math instruction. So we're having to pull that load on our own through things like Title I programs, through other special funds. So as Mr. Matthews goes through, he's going to be throwing out a lot of different sources and reasons why and why these things are in place. And so just kind of wanted to preface that if he got started.
All right, here, thank you. If you'll advance one more slide. What I'm decided to do in presenting this information to you was to break it down into two categories. One was personnel changes that we've made in the past couple of years and the other being programmatic supports that we have in place for our district. So first, looking at the personnel concerns. New for this year, we repurposed a existing district office position that was vacated. And with that, we added an elementary special education coordinator to assist Mr. McGovern specifically to work with our elementary school to help keep students in class and to work with compliance and being sure our I Ps are in place and focused in the right way. Additionally, with that, I'm going to skip down to the district science coach. We also with that additional position, when we repurpose that position, we split that and got the elementary special education coordinator. And we also hired a district science coach to help with our science instruction. So you may know Ms. Elmore, who was a state STEM teacher of the year, taught at Lugolf Elgin Middle School for years, is now our district science coach. And she's going into science classrooms across the district, specifically right now focusing on grade four and six and our biology C classes because grade four and six are the F C ready science test. And then obviously biology is the E S D class for high school. Now, you have to also back up. If we're 10th grade is when we're teaching biology, then we need to look at that ninth grade environmental science class to be sure that it's lining up and supporting the biology class. Same thing with third grade science and fifth grade science feeding into that fourth and sixth grade. So we're working very closely with those teachers. And she's going in and modeling lessons and helping them out and being sure that they're following the pacing guides that we have in place. Additionally, through our A T S I designations, we were, along with the A T S I designations, we were given close to $500,000 in funds to support our program. So with that, we've hired a special education curriculum coach and three elementary math coaches. These coaches, similar to the job description for Ms. Elmore, these coaches are going in, the three elementary coaches are split by geographic areas. Three, one in the Lugolf Elgin area covering three schools, one doing the Camden schools and one doing the North Central school. So they each have three elementary schools that they're dealing with. And they're going into each of the elementary schools, addressing the needs that they see in the class. Of course, the first thing they had to do was gauge what was going on, take a dipstick and see exactly what's happening in our classroom. And once we gauge where we are with the coaches, then they can go back in and do some pedagogy with them and change the instructional strategies for that. We've also increased, thank you, Dr. Goodwin and Brad, we've increased the number of multilingual teachers that we have. As you're aware, we have a growing population of multilingual learners, specifically now in the Camden area, Jackson, Camden Middle, Camden High, and now in Blaney, Blaney and Stover also going very rapidly in our multilingual learner students. So we need to bring additional support to support that.
Just quickly, if you don't mind me asking, I saw that. Do we know when we look at the report cards across the district of the changes, right, from all the different schools? Do we know how, what the percentages of the multilingual students, if they are producing on the level, above that level or below the level? You know, are they bringing those scores down significantly?
It depends on the cohort side. And by that, for a subgroup to affect your school report card, you have to have a certain number of students in that cohort. So that number is 20. But that's 20 in the tested grade. So I may have 20 at Watery Elementary School, but I may not have 20 in the third, fourth and fifth grade. So if I don't have 20 in the third, fourth and fifth grade, then that wouldn't, that subgroup wouldn't affect our score. But if I do have that in a school like Jackson or Camden Middle or Camden High, where you have significantly more than that, then they will affect. Now, also, you've got to remember that if they just got here, if they're a level one or a level two for a year, they don't take the test. But after a year and a half, two years, they begin to take the test, whether or not they are ready for the test or not. They have to take the test and they do count with or for or against the score. So yes, sir, that's true. But it depends on, you know, different students come in at different levels. You know, at Cameron High School, I had students who came in who were very capable and I was happy to have their test score. I also had students that came in who hadn't been in school in three years. They hadn't been in school since the sixth grade and they're in ninth grade. And they're basically illiterate in K language. And they can't read Spanish, they can't read English. But after two years, they're expected to take the test. So it's our job to get them as ready as we can in that length of time. You're welcome. Also, already in place, we had nine literacy and M T S S coaches. Currently, you know, we've played with the model over time. Now they're specifically assigned to a school. So David Roberts is one of our literacy coaches. In the past, he may have served multiple schools. Now he's assigned specifically to one elementary school and he stays there all day long. But he serves two roles. He's the literacy coach, he's also the M T S S coach. So he performs multi-function. We also have a middle school math and M T S S coach, which is funded by Title I. Our four middle schools fund Dr. Branham's position. She's in the audience, I want to give her a shout out. She's going to all of our middle schools and does a wonderful job of getting in to those middle school math classes when she's not performing her other role as an M T S S coach. We have reading interventionist in nine out of nine of our elementary schools, three out of four of our middle schools. We have math interventionist in six out of nine of our elementary schools. Some of the reasons that's not nine out of nine or four out of four is because some of those people were filling vacancies that we had in core instructional areas. But Lugolf Elgin Middle School had a math vacancy to start the year and had a math interventionist. That math interventionist was probably shifted into that vacant classroom. So that way, we're not losing that instructional time with those students. We have three social workers that you're aware of. I brought that in there because there is a mental health crisis in our state, in our nation. And that exists in Kirshaw County as well. And our social workers, of whom we have three, they are Esther funded positions, so they sunset at the end of this year. So Dr. Goodwin, Mr. Willard and I are looking at ways to find alternate funding for them because they're very good. We have three, we could use nine. The need is great. We have mental health counselors, we have four that are generally general funded positions within the district, four R B H S counselors within our district. And then we have outside agencies to fill the needs that our four R B H S counselors cannot fill. We currently have contracts with Stan Hills Medical Firm Foundation, Alpha Center and C T S out of Rock Hill to serve those gaps. And the funding process for them is they bill Medicaid. That's how we pay them. They're allowed to bill Medicaid for their Medicaid eligible students, but they also serve students who are not Medicaid eligible. So we were able to, you know, leverage that, our Medicaid services. And our R B H S counselors also bill Medicaid and that brings money into the district. In fact, our Medicaid audit is at the end of this month. Next slide, please. Programmatic support. Yeah. Yeah.
Before we leave this slide, I wanted to ask a few things about the elementary fed coordinator. Obviously, as a recent practitioner, the one thing I did see is that we were always or seemingly somewhat lacking with support from the district level and fed, which is huge because kind of encompasses two echelons. One is that it's our most needy population and we need to serve. One is that it's our most needy population um and we need to serve them to the best of our ability. And then number two, it can also be our most litigious population.
Absolutely.
So um obviously, as a new board member, I was happy to support uh some help for Terry. Um and I understand she's doing an exemplary job.
She is.
So help me refresh my mind in a couple of ways. And I was probably working in another district at the time, but didn't we have even more district level positions, you recall, Dan? To help with Fed um free Terry even?
There probably to the level we are now. Um there was probably in in my memory and granted, my memory is not not what it used to be. Uh but uh I can remember uh Ms. Davis having an assistant or a coordinator with her. Same thing with Dr. Strerinti before her, she had Ms. Davis as her coordinator that worked with her. So there was always uh a Batman and a Robin, uh so to speak. Uh so but part of the the nice thing here is that Terry and Dr. Phil work so well together and you're constantly bouncing ideas off of one another to be sure that 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 our special ed services are to the level that they ought to be. You're exactly right, very litigious part of our organization, but also with our elementary, if we can catch them early. Special education shouldn't be a destination. Uh it should be a service that we provide. Uh and and we need to be sure that we are giving those kids the interventions that they need to be sure that we're able to to address those needs.
Right, right. Um and I guess I feel kind of in my practitioner mode. And as you know, each level, and I worked at all three, you know, as well, elementary, middle, high, all is a different whole subset of needs in within themselves, uh depending on what grade level the child is categorized in and and the disability. Did we hire um Dr. Phil specifically as an elementary fed coordinator?
Yes.
I thought she was a fed coordinator and that was under her umbrella.
It it is, she does some other things, but her primary focus right now is getting a handle on elementary special education. Uh that's a growing part of our population, especially our developmentally delayed three-year-old program are bursting at the seams. Uh we we're seeing huge growth in that and so, you know, that along with the hiring special education teachers who are precious to sympathy. Uh they're 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 just not out there. So we're we've done a very, they have done a very good job of finding people, uh whether through contracted services or uh through uh staffing organizations that can provide the the O T P Ts uh speech language pathologues in addition to psychologists and our special education teachers. And they also are looking at ways that we can uh consolidate our program or shift the focus of some of our programs so we can better serve the students in our program.
And then the last thing, I applaud our administration and the instruction department for getting the help in in that area as well. And I'd just like to publicly state at some point, I hope the board and and administration would consider bolstering it if even more, maybe even have a middle and high.
I agree.
Middle and high, middle or high coordinator as well because as you indicated, it's a growing population and that's not going to stop.
That's.
And as um as time goes on, parents become more cognizant and conscientious regarding what their children need as they go through our our system. So I just feel like it's really, really important again, because as I would always say, um you know, the goal is for a child to work themselves out of Fed, if at all possible.
Absolutely.
And um obviously, the more support we have in place, the better chances stand to be there.
Thank you.
One just one more question on the, you got the new this year and already in place, right? Already in place since when? In other words, because the goal is to help us understand the report card.
Sure, sure.
How we're getting better. So if this was already in place last year and we didn't improve, then since when?
All right, the literacy coaches have been in place for a while. So pre pre-me, that that's been a state mandate for for a good number of years. The middle school literacy um M T S S coach has only been there one year. So she was developing uh her, you know, building relationships last year. Uh we're beginning to see growth i- in our middle school. Uh the reading interventionist, some of them go back, our Title One funded position, some of them started with Esther. Um now, we've done a very good job, I think, of moving everybody out of Esther for the most part. Uh and and so they're all out of Esther for that part, so they've been there two years. This is, this would be their third. Um same thing with the math interventionist, the social workers are again an Esther funded position, so this is their third year. Uh the mental health counselors, the uh four R B H S counselors that we have have been there for uh about six years. Uh Dr. Taylor started that uh process a while back. Uh I gotta say, she was ahead of her time. Uh we used them with uh the Department of Mental Health at Camden High School. We had one who was part-time with us and part-time at other schools and that's generally the model we've used. And then we would fill in with D M H uh when our our R B A test counselor wasn't there. Unfortunately, now, D M H can't fulfill that role, they they're not able. Uh they don't have the staff or the will to do that. So we've had to go with outside companies uh to fill this need. And in fact, our former director of uh social emotional learning hasn't gone out and begun that kind of private service as well. Uh she saw the need as well. If mental health has become a huge, a huge need in our community.
If if I could go back and add to the special education discussion, uh one of the positions that can really help us in special education is good competent psychologists. And right now, we're running with with some contracted psychologists too. They're great to have, but they don't have the vested interest in making sure that the overall Fed program is healthy. They just do the job, they don't own the job. And and so we're going to, you know, one of the things that that we all know will come out of the Sally Day, we know we don't compensate that position at a market level to get those folks. You know, they they jump ship on us like crazy. So we do need to bring stability to our psychologists because uh Dr. King, you may be remembering how good the psychologists were too in assisting with with kids, you know, and that's why that department looks so big. So we will um we're 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 all out on on finding psychologists. You'll notice, I think it was last month, we hired one who who came to us. Anytime we can hire, even if we don't quote have a position, we hire a psychologist. So if if one becomes a base. So I'm sorry to interrupt this man.
That's fair. Um moving into our program uh programmatic supports, you'll see first on the list, teaching students of poverty. Uh that's our year-long professional development for uh our school district. Uh started with a kickoff with our administrators before school started and then with the teachers at our opening convocation. Uh we've had two other meetings with our our cohort is about a hundred uh teachers. And it's the train the trainer model, so they act like very similar to what our math uh training was last year. It is an ongoing professional development that lasts throughout the year. Uh there are about a hundred teachers who are involved. Uh if you won't, I can provide the spreadsheet with the names on it. Uh but their their goal with Dr. Pulowski from uh Francis Marion Center for Excellence, who's a nationally known uh expert in teaching students of poverty, she come, we bring those teachers in for the day. Uh and uh she trains those teachers and some administrators are part of that as well. And they take it back to schools and and train the people there in what they've learned uh that previous day. Uh I will remind everybody in our last uh pupils in poverty designation from the state, our number of students in poverty is sixty-two point five. So that's raised two point five percent from last year. So that that metric isn't going to decrease, it's only going to increase. So we need to be cognizant because students in poverty have different stressors on their lives and and bring different baggage with them to school. And and how they how they learn, how they deal with their peers, uh what they had to eat. So we we have to be cognizant of those facts and and work to scaffold interventions to help them. Uh we have created uh uh Herschel County School District Core Curriculum and Special Ed Curriculum Matrix. Uh it's interesting that it was not germane to this conversation, but Ms. Kato went to a a session with uh Matthew Ferguson, Dr. Ferguson, with the State Department. And he brought up a a stat from uh twenty seventeen that ninety-six percent of the teachers, not in South Carolina, but this is a Rand Corporation analysis. And nine, and this is twenty seventeen, so it's all dated, ninety-six percent of of teachers who are getting their lesson plan from the internet. That's a staggering number. And you can imagine that if we were to run that number now in twenty twenty-three, that number would be different. And it would probably be higher, which is scary considering ninety-six percent is just about everybody. So we created a curriculum matrix in Fed and in Core Curriculum, so teachers know what the state adopted materials are. These are the the things that we have approved for them to use. We don't want them going to teacher pay teachers or to engage New York to to get lessons that aren't aligned to South Carolina standards or our pacing guide. So we've been very intentional about saying, and this conversation has been had with our administrators, Dr. uh Goodwin has has uh reiterated this with with our administrators, that we expect them to use out the adopted resources that we have in place. Uh to use anything else, you're not teaching to the depth of the standard. Uh there may be some really good things on teacher pay teachers, but where are they aligned to? Are they aligned to Common Tor, they align to Arkansas, to Oregon, where? So and all standards are not created equal. We know what our standards are and we need to be teaching to the depth of our standards. Um Dr. Philp and uh Mr. McGovern have created an I E P training series uh for our our admit uh our special education teachers uh to work with developing I E Ps that are legal, compliant, uh but also meet the needs of of our special ed populations. We want to be sure those goals that are in place are not just attainable, but stretch them just a little bit to be sure that we are moving them and and the expectation for progress is the same for them as they are with any other student. We want to be sure that we're we're focused on that. And those uh have met five times so far far this year and and, you know, we have uh special education teachers and principals from across the district come in here. Uh sometimes they'll pick a pocket knife while working on that, so God bless them for that. Um Ms. Kato has been focused on our new E L A standards training. Uh as you are aware, uh we have brand new E L A standards that were adopted last year. This is the transition year and next year they'll be tested. So we have uh done a standards crosswalk, we are developing uh pacing guides and we would be working on developing assessments uh to be sure our teachers are ready for when that happens. And again, uh I've had a question before on is this, you know, sort of a a one and done? Is this something that happens one time? The volume of 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 information is too big for a one and done. They're going to meet five or six times during the course of the year, primarily during our our professional development days. And then again in the summer, just to be sure we're ready for that rollout in the in the fall, because in the fall, that's a tested subject. I mean, it's tested anyway, but they'll be tested on the new thing. Um the math training cohort, um we talked about already, that was last year. Uh but on the heels of that, next year will be, we have new math standards. So the new English standard followed by new math standard. So we will do the same process that we did with the English standards this year with the math standards next year. Principal data huddle, we meet with the principals, when I say we, it's the uh instructional department, I go to all of them. Kato goes to the elementary and middle schools because those are all Title One schools. Ms. Nichols, as the director of intervention goes, Mr. McGovern and Philp goes uh when we have these data huddles. And the first one in the in the fall is is specifically focused on uh on your spring data. What was, what were your standardized scores? And it's broken down by subgroup. We expect them to be able to analyze the data and go in by subgroups and then they make a presentation to us uh about what their plans are moving forward, how are they addressing them? But it doesn't stop there. There's another one uh further down the road. Uh the next one we'll we do, which we did a little while ago, uh that and I, what I call the meeting after the meeting, which we have after every uh festival meeting. We focus on our formative assessment, so we looked at our 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 beginning of the year math scores. So we were looking at our beginning of the year math scores. And the data should not stay with the principal and it shouldn't necessarily stay with the teacher. It needs to get down to the to the student and the student should develop goals uh about how they are going to address their own strengths and their own areas of improvement. So we we expect our principals to do that now. In the in the high school, when we're focused on E S D classes, uh we we focus on on a different metric other than uh uh other than math, we use um progress learning, which used to be called U S A Test Prep. So we're we're using that and we have uh and then in the spring, we will look at our middle of the year map data and begin to make guesses, educated guesses about how we're going to perform in the in the uh in the spring when standardized test scores come around. Uh last year, uh in in March, we instituted a graduation rate protocol with all of our high schools. Uh that's a focused approach at looking at individual students. Uh so uh we looked at what's called a nine G R cohort. So that for this year, the cohort is nine G R twenty-one. So that's the year they entered high school. So we should be able to track every student in that in that nine G R cohort and find out where they are. Are they on track for graduation? If they're not on track for graduation, why are they not on track for graduation? Uh Dr. Goodwin is currently passing three out of four classes. What's that fourth class he's missing? Why is he missing that? Are there absence issues? What things can he remediate now in what's called content recovery? Not credit recovery, which happens at the end of the course, but content recovery, if he failed a specific uh chapter of a test, he should be allowed to remediate that chapter and and make a better grade. The goal should be mastery of standards. That's that's the goal. It's not necessarily what your grade is, it is the grade, because that's part of the uniform grading scale and that's the expectation. But ultimately, the goal should be for for him to master the standard that he's done. But we also have to know down to the individual student, what's going on with the student. Uh Dr. Goodwin and I went and uh went to the graduation protocol meeting at North Central High School and it was amazing that when we sat down and talked with uh Kirkland and Mr. Branham and their two guidance counselors, that we were able to dig down into the individual student and they could say, oh, you remember him? He has this going on. By the way, he's been sick, so we need to find a way to bring his attendance back in line. Uh he's missed six days, uh of which he should not, he should have only missed five total. So why is he missing days? So it is, it's digging down to that individual student and making early intervention. Uh you know, to some extent with our with our nine G R twenty-ones, some of that shift is already safe. If you're a uh a six, an eighteen-year-old freshman, and that would mean you you have less than than six credits or you've only, you've never passed math or English because there's the the promotion requirement asks that you pass six classes each year, one of which must be math and one of which must be English. If you've never done that, then it's going to be very difficult for you to graduate in four years if you've got six credits and this is your fourth year, because you can only get eight in a year. Uh so we need to do, we need to catch those kids early. We don't, by the time they get seniors or that fourth year in high school, to some extent, it's too late. It's time to look at at alternative ways of getting them a diploma or a D E D. And uh Mr. Johnson has done a remarkable job of of getting students across the finish line. Uh we've purchased iReady with some of our Esther funds and uh re-upped that with some of our A T S I funds uh to provide an additional curriculum for intervention after school tutoring and special education. You can't teach kids the same way every time. I can't just talk slower and louder and think that's going to do do their job. I need to find an alternate way of explaining the material to them. So we have a an additional curriculum of iReady uh to help with that. Uh math, iReady and Dreambox, Dreambox is a math supplemental train uh sup- supplemental technology program that we have through the state. It's free through through the state and uh Dr. Goodwin told me free was It's free through through the state and Dr. Goodwin told me free was in our budget. And those trainers come in and have spoken with our staff, but they also do ongoing PD with our administrators. iReady was here today, they'll be back in January. Dreambox has a meeting with our elementary principals tomorrow after our elementary school, after our admin meeting. Project RE training, which is uh, ELA training for our special ed folks and for our elementary school has been ongoing, that too has been free for us. Thanks to Mr. Nichols for that. We have meetings after the meetings with our principals. I'm sure they're sick of me, but it's important that we get in, get down in the week. We need to get down and dirty with them and and make sure the expectation is clear. We have micro credential opportunities. We have a partnership with USC to provide micro credentials, which is a professional development tool for our teachers. We developed a stack. We have a, we purchased a stack of micro credentials from USC. And teachers, we had a list of nine, we just have to complete five of the stack. Some of them were specifically focused on math, some of them were focused on just good teaching strategy, questioning techniques, feedback techniques that were aligned for the adept four point O rubric. And with our Title II funds, we were able to get a, so they would get half of their recertification credit by completing five of these. We would also give them a two hundred dollar stipend and a badge that lets them know they were a master math teacher. They completed this certification process. We've created or in the process of creating a stack like that for English and a stack like that for our multilingual learners, uh, teachers. Our after-school tutoring program, as you know, you may remember, is our program we use first grade through eighth grade. We do eight weeks in the fall and sixteen weeks in the spring. The focus group is our tier three students, which are students who are most at risk. They stay after school, they use the iReady program as their as at their curriculum. They do it on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We provide supper for them, we also provide bus transportation for them. So we send out, you know, asking parents to commit. It gets a little difficult in the spring as sports happen and and we understand that. But at the same time, we ask them to commit to this for their kids. Our new strategic plan, which is completely separate from Cognia. Got nothing to do with Cognia, this is State Department Strategic Plan. We'll develop that in the spring. We'll, it'll tie very closely to our Cognia plan, as you will see. Compliance step, Cognia, as you know, we are also in line for a consolidated monitoring visit, which is a monitoring business of all our federal funds. Districts get chosen at random. It was our turn, so Cognia Consolidated Monitoring Visit, Resource Allocation Review. It's our year for all of that, so we're going to knock it all out this year. But we feel we're in good shape. That will that will monitor our Title I programs, our Title II, Title III and Title IV programs. And finally, in the future, you'll see, you'll hear us talk about Mastery Connect. One of the things that I see, and Dr. Goodwin can back me up on this, I hope, is we're not assessing as a district to the depth of the standard. When you look at the number of students on the honor roll, you you should want that to parallel your scores on your state assessment. And that's not happening. We have a lot of students who who are who are on the honor roll, and I'm very proud of that, very happy for that. But I would want that to mimic, or I would actually want our state assessment force to mimic our honor rolls student. So we're not testing to the depth of the standard. Mastery Connect is an assessment package that actually ties in, is actually owned by the same company as Canvas, ties in with Canvas, and it will allow us to create a common assessment in every grade level and in every course. So, yeah, Mr. Eric is giving a third grade math test. Mr. Blackman is giving a third grade math test. They're giving the same, and that will allow us to dig down in, further dig down into the week and figure out, well, why is Mr. Blackman's kids doing so much better than Mr. Eric's kids? What it, what is it that he's doing that he's not doing? And what, how can we align their instruction to be sure that you're not penalized because of your zip code as as to as to how you're doing? So that's sort of where we are right now. Probably went on a lot longer than I should. But yeah, I'd be glad to take any further questions if you have it.
Questions, easy questions. We made an answer, made an answer. Special ed teachers, we're talking a lot about special ed.
Yes, sir.
And we're short, are we short, we're short special ed teachers in the district? Does anybody know the number or?
Uh, ones that are unfilled even by contract, uh, teachers, I think right now it's four across the district. Now, we do have a number of vacancies filling because we have positions, but we're contracting without that service.
And I appreciate all this information, it's good information. Would anybody know the caseload for special ed teacher?
We can certainly provide that for you.
It's pretty.
It it's not, there are segments, there are pockets that are very high. There are other pockets that are are very fine. You know, when I, when I talked about our three-year-old development and delayed program, those numbers are very high, but there is no staffing standard in the state. So that's that's unusual, that there's no staffing standard as there would be in in a, an LD class.
And they're just hard to fill. Special ed positions are hard to fill.
When I say precious intensity, that's true. You can't find, and to say we only have four is good work. I, our H R department works their, works their tail off for that.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions today?
Couple, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Just because the the idea is to really address the report card.
Yes, sir.
So that the folks who have been calling us saying, you know, what's what's the plan, right? And y'all know the plan, we just have to understand the plans and we can properly articulate it. When you take the programmatic supports, right, each of those items, which are great things. Have you, have you guys set benchmarks and dates to evaluate the progress of each of those those things? Like, for example, if you're doing the the data huddle, right? Or how often, and I know you have different test dates, but can you, can you see from there, hey, we're on track? Or, hey, we're still average, we're below average?
Not from a report card standpoint, because a report card deals with your standardized summative data, which happens in May. So from that standpoint, no, but with our formative assessment, yes, with MAP and with iReady, we can, we can see where we are, how many of our kids are where they're supposed to be and where they are. Yes. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, we're, we're getting into legislative season and, you know, you're starting to hear different things floating around. Just wanted to give you a few updates. And of course, when you go to the Legislative Advocacy Conference in December, I'm sure these will all be a bunch of hot topics to be discussed there. But um, the state superintendent has released parts of her executive or her, her state superintendent recommendations on budget. And one of the things that we always get is, you know, what what's going to happen to teacher pay? And, you know, the governor is committed to raising starting teacher pay to fifty thousand dollars in in three more years, in three years, so this coming year and two more. And if you'll recall, we did, we did the twenty-five hundred, and then we did a local amount on on teachers so that we exceeded the state. Right now, the proposal, though, is a little bit different. This is a different approach for what Superintendent Weaver is is proposing. She's proposing a fifteen hundred dollar raise for all sales in the teaching chart for next year. What she's also proposing is five additional days, paid days, to be devoted strictly to staff development, which ties right back into our discussion tonight. Because one thing that we don't want to do is continually pull teachers out of the classroom. It's better to have them on a day that students are not here. Now, I will tell you that three years ago, there was a proposal made to increase three days on teacher contracts. And those three days were going to be teacher work days, where those teachers were unencumbered to do what they thought they needed to do in the classroom. And the two large teacher organizations came out very strong against adding three days to the teaching contract. Now, PSTA and SCA have not weighed in as of yet on five additional contract days. Plus, it also now has gone down, folks, that the state budget doesn't get passed till late in June. We're going to have already signed contracts with teachers for only a hundred and ninety days. So you you can't commit to a hundred and ninety-five days in years if you have a state budget. So now everybody's scratching their head going, well, maybe we can't give them the five days until the next school year, which means then teachers are back to a fifteen hundred dollar standalone rate as opposed to the twenty-five hundred that they got last year. So all of a sudden now, we may have alienated the teacher representative groups by that change. So I just make you aware of that because in the state superintendent's meeting last Thursday, all of a sudden, everybody in the room is scratching their head going, you're really not going to be able to do this before contract date? It's the budget, not adopted before contract date. And so we we, it's kind of a, a wait and see now what's going to be the next chess move that somebody does. So we'll certainly keep you and and I'll keep teachers through the teacher forum updated on this all the way through. We do have a Hill Day and Advocacy Day for our teacher forum, where they'll actually go to the State House and and they'll actually lobby that day. So I'm sure we'll have them loaded up with that data. The next one that's getting a lot of off-season press is the South Carolina High School League Competitive Balance Issue. You know, the 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 athletic charters, the Gray Collegiate, as they get referred to, the Oceanside Collegiate, the Legion Collegiate, the Mountain View Collegiate that's opening in Spartanburg. All of these, you know, appear to have a competitive advantage. When you look at the number of state championships won by those groups, it is much higher percentage than others. And so we've been sort of crying this cry for a number of years, and the legislators have kind of turned a blind eye on it because they were like, well, it doesn't affect my area. But all of a sudden, it's gotten to be big enough now that it affects the whole state. So they got really interested last part of the session, and they, there were a number of bills introduced about competitive balance. And what do you do about the athletic charter? Doc Smith came by my office before this meeting, and I was watching a four-hour meeting of the High School League Executive Committee from today. And that's about as exciting as watching paint dry. But uh, but in in four hours today, they were discussing proposals from their subcommittee on how to address this competitive balance. Now, it even gets a little more interesting, because you may be aware that if a charter school does not offer a sport and the child wants to play football and the charter school they go to doesn't have a football team, they can come to our school and play football. But that's not likewise with private school students. So now entwined in all of this is, well, why can't the child who goes to the private school, who's a little private school who maybe only has two hundred and fifty kids, that can't afford football? Why can't they come to us and play football is what they're asking. So we got that mixed in. And then just to make it a little more complicated, then one of the bills dissolves the South Carolina High School League and moves it under its own department in the State Department of Education. So it becomes, instead of a standalone organization, it becomes part of the State Department of Education. It reminds me of the old saying, I'm here from the IRS and I'm here to help. And you know, if you get that question, you're you're in trouble. I'm just not sure that they really have thought through that move. So there there have been three hearings during the off-season. There'll be more hearings coming up, and it's going to be interesting to see what the press is tomorrow after this four-hour meeting today of the executive committee, where they sort of rolled out the options that they're looking at, putting into place. This is really scary because typically, we would have realignment by December of this year. So we're talking a little over a month from now, we would have realignment. All these balls are in the air, and we're in realignment. So who knows what's going to happen? The next one that's that popped up is the state superintendent has proposed the, I think it was October the twentieth was the closing for public input. But she is proposing a new regulation that would address how media center materials and classroom library materials are vetted and selected, and specifically how those materials are deemed appropriate, age appropriateness, content alignment standards, as well as, you know, how do they fit? And are they appropriate for schools? She is is proposing a new regulation that would describe and define all of that. Now, my understanding was that regulation was going to be dropped today publicly. But as of when I came to this meeting, it had not been dropped publicly. So the state board does take it up. Duly, I did find out they're taking it up next week. They they have a work session tomorrow, but they're not taking up business. But it'll be interesting to see. This also is, this will also standardize how people challenge materials. And it will be standardized across the state. If someone wants to challenge a, a, some material that we use, it would be standardized. Whereas right now, all districts have their own policy. We do pretty much follow the model policy, but it would be standardized across. Now, this one gets really messy in getting it passed, because first, the State Board of Education has to pass it. Then it has to go to the state legislators, and it has to be passed. And, you know, with it being a year, an election year for all House members, all Senate members, it'll be a year of political posturing. So it'll be interesting to see what happens to this regulation as it goes forward. And last, but certainly not least, there appears to be a move on to revisit the state funding formula that was just passed and begun last year. Because what they have found out is, is that the old formula really was maybe better than they thought it was. And that maybe those folks back in the nineteen seventies were on to something and understood what they were doing. And what it's resulted in, our di- our district is really unique. There's a group of districts that are sort of in the middle of the pack as far as finances and poverty index and all that. And we're kind of one of those middle districts. We didn't gain anything out of the new formula, and we really didn't lose anything, which we're quite quite thankful for. But when we look at financials each month, y'all hear Brad say, we're still watching the new formula. We're kind of waiting for the other shoe to drop and something bad to show up. But, you know, we've, we've been, what, fifteen months with this new one? And so far, we're pretty predictable on what it is. But there are districts that lost millions of dollars, literally, under the new funding formula. And there are districts that gained millions of dollars. Of course, they're not complaining, but it really, you know, but but there's a real discrepancy. Not only is there a discrepancy there, but when they apply things like, you know, the the new formula is based off a master's teacher with twelve years' experience. And and the state minimum salary schedule for masters is twelve. They really didn't have a good mechanism for, well, those salaries went up this year. They didn't have a real good mechanism to spread that then through all the teaching staff. So it it's interesting that that the word that Brad and I get is that there's probably going to be a revisit to this whole thing, and who knows what it's going to end up being. But we'll watch it because we want to be sure that we don't become more elusive in this thing. This is, this will be a very, if you, if you watch politics, every fourth year, both the House and Senate members in the State House are up for election. This is is what you call silly season, sure enough, because really strange stuff gets thrown out there in an effort to retain seats and win. Because really strange stuff gets thrown out there in an effort to retain seats and win seats. So, you know, we'll want to keep a real close eye on this all the way through the process. If there are any questions, you all get a legislative update every week from the School Board Association, even when they're not in session. You know, if something comes up about one of those and you want a little more research and detail, just let me know.
Any questions? Thank you, Doc. There's a motion to go into executive session to discuss the legislation in the time of certified and classified personnel, informed and certified and classified personnel, assignment changes and transfers of certified and classified personnel, and superintendent evaluation. Popular motion by Mr. Iretz, second by Mr. Roberts. All those in favor, they've been on by 100.
And that's unanimous.
Aye.
And that's unanimous. In executive session we discussed resignation and retirement of certified classified personnel, employment of certified and classified personnel, assignment changes and transfer of certified classified personnel, and superintendent evaluation. There's a motion to accept administrative recommendations concerning employment matters. Properly motioned by Coach Blackman, seconded by Mr. Aaron. All those in favor that have been known by saying aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous. The no action was taken in executive session. There was discussion, discussion concerning the superintendent 2223 performance evaluation. This evening, the board of trustees met in the executive, executive section to discuss his first annual job performance evaluation of superintendent J Harrison Gilwin. The superintendent was evaluated in the following areas: general characteristic and leadership of non-instructional areas, instructional leadership in employment development, communication and community engagement, budget, operations and management of resources, and leadership and innovation of special specific goals. As chairman on behalf of my fellow board members, I wish to announce that Dr. Gilwin did an outstanding job in his first year of our superintendent and therefore receiving overall meet expectations on his annual evaluation. Based on our discussion, the board and the board, excuse me just one moment. It helps to keep these things handed. The board and the district is, the board and the district is well served by having a veteran superintendent as our leader. Dr. Gilwin is a very effective leader who is engaged with his community and totally committed to the success of the district children. In the board's opinion, Dr. Dr. Gilwin has committed to students' achievement and through SFA fund as well as other resources. He has placed an emphasis on addressing student learning loss by providing summer camp for students and free after school tutoring service. He has also evaluated and implemented changes in delivery of service in our special education program. Further, Dr. Gilwin is concentrating on the use of technology to advance the education of our students and placing special emphasis upon mathematics instruction. With the national teachers shortage, the superintendent is focusing on teaching, recruitment, and retention by finding ways to keep our teacher salary competitive and reinstituting a longevity stipend. Dr. Gilwin is also reorganizing and streamlining the district administration structure and reevaluating equity staff staffing in the schools to ensure that every school in the district has employees needed to be successful. For the 202223 school year, the board wished to congratulate Dr. Gilwin on the following: reopening of North Central High School, completing major projects at Camden High School and Lugop Eldon High School in the current maintenance project district-wide, safety upgrade to video security system and addition of open gate weapon detection system, implementation of the universal free breakfast program for the 2223 school year, and his work with the community eligibility provision program for the 2324 school year. And his partnership with the Center Center of Excellence for Teaching Children of Privacy for a year long focus on serving our students. My colleagues and I also want to commend Dr. Gilwin for promoting fiscal responsibility and ensuring that our fund balance is strong. The superintendent is actively involved in promoting positive relationship with the community at large. In addition, we work well together and appreciate the way he communicates and keep us informed. As a result of Dr. Gilwin receiving immediate expectation on his annual evaluation is there motion regarding the superintendent's performance.
Mr. Chairman, I move that based on Dr. Gilwin's outstanding performance and evaluation for the 2223 school year, the board authorizes you to execute an amendment to the superintendent's employment agreement with the district to increase the district's annual contribution to an annuity plan of Dr. Gilwin choosing by one percent per year, increase his salary by two percent effective July 1, 2023, increase his annual leave days by one day, and extend his employment for an additional one year through June 30, 2026.
And properly motioned in second. All those in favor that have been known by raise your right hand. And that's unanimous. It's good to be in your company. And, and we really do mean everything. Well, everything that we have read is what your leadership have done over the last 16 months you've been here with us. And we don't take that life. I mean, we really do not take that life. So we are expecting you to hang around for a while. And I think someone said earlier, and I believe Matt can help me remember that, as a, as a minimum, we was looking for seven years out of you. So, okay. All right. It's their motion to adjourn in closer prayer. Properly motioned by Mr. McDonald, seconded by Coach Blackman. All those in favor that have been known by saying aye. And that's unanimous.
Thank you. Heavenly Father, we thank you for abiding with us this evening as you carried on the business of Kershaw County School District. We will leave here this evening Lord but never from your divine presence. He asks that you lead us safely back home and find all this well. And we will give you all honor and glory that is due you and it's in your name we pray and it's in your name we count it down. Amen.